Good evening, everybody. Well, welcome you to the October 8th Town Council meeting in the town of Washington. Opened meeting called Order. First item on the agenda really is to talk about the agenda. We do intend to go into closed session tonight. In accordance with, and we'll go through this later again, but in accordance with provisions of Section 2.2-3711.3 to discuss disposition of publicly held real property, namely Parcel 3 at the intersection of Old Route 211-522 and Leggett Lane, containing .5853 acres, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the party's position in negotiating strategy of the Town Council. We'll do more introduction to that later, but I'm gonna put that on the agenda. We have a closed session on the agenda, but we are in fact, might have a closed session, if that is acceptable to my colleagues. Yes, I would trust that it is.
I'd be pleased with that.
Yes. We also have addition to the agenda which has to do with the oxen crisis, shall I say, here in town, and some thoughts on that subject. And I guess we'll put that under your business, if that's acceptable.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. First item, minutes, May 21st. Any comments? Suggestions?
I just had a couple of little things that have passed on the board. It's been a little bit.
All right. Anybody else? Any subs? If none, do I have a motion to approve?
I don't have a question.
All right. Mary Ann, second. Your second. All in favor? All right. The Chair's report, Mr. Gold.
Thank you. Consolidated assets of the town of Washington as of 9/30/2018 were $475,143. During that same period, the consolidated assets of the Washington Water Works was $29,524.20. In this quarter, it was $4,179.19. Total income for the town of Washington in September 2018 was $29,419.75. During that same period, the income for the Washington Water Works was $7,966.60. And the wastewater works income was $13,714.90. September, Washington Water Works, we pumped 848,200 gallons. We backwash 28,200. Leamis, 812,000 billable gallons. We billed 628,413. We sold another 5,000 unneeded sales. Leamis with a total of 178,587 treated but not yet billed gallons of water. Tax on the bills to be paid and the additional bills, I think is the one that kind of stands out, for Washington Water, wastewater works is our Virginia Resource Authority wastewater destruction payment of $88,745.30. Other than that, I don't think there's anything unusual or extravagant. And the additional bills is also being approved there. Is there any questions? That's all I have.
Any questions? To remind people of the wastewater, $88,000 we do twice a year paying down that money. Any questions? If there's none, motion to approve. Second, all in favor?
Thank you. Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission at its last meeting went through the documents that it had about the housing task force had developed. We had the benefit of outside consultants, expert in the field of zoning, namely John McCarthy, who may you know, and Wayne Silverberg, who used to be the Director of Planning for Avon Hall County, to provide their comments. John Bennett provided his comments. And the Planning Commission, after the reviewing, the work that the Town Council, or that the housing task force had done, recommends that at this point, that the Town Attorney should review and prepare that ordinance as soon as possible to be presented to the Town Council for its review and hopefully their approval.
This is the cloud.
This is the cloud. By the way, sorry. Which is a planned unit development. The zoning, there are several points that the Planning Commission, which to emphasize, one is that the zoning should be incorporated to the five current districts, not added as a sixth district. Second, there should be at least two public hearings as part of any cloud application. Three, the role that the Architectural Review Board should be clarified, should be part of the cloud application process. And then four, should the Architectural Review Board's authority extend to any new areas brought into the town by boundary line adjustment. So at this point, we do not have a ordinance to present to the Town Council tonight for its review. We are at a point, essentially, we had gotten a template that was from public domain, but it was from another state. And one of the consultants made a very good point, is that you want to make sure that it crosses all the Ts and dots all the Is for the state code. So for that reason, the Planning Commission is recommending that the document go at this point to John, to the, to an attorney slash zoning administrator, which I have to my right, the town, who can go ahead and prepare. The, one other point that the Planning Commission felt is that this should be done as quickly as possible. And they're hoping within a 30 to 60 day window, so that it would be approved for a public hearing at the end of 60 days. And then hopefully it would be, after a public hearing, it would be approved by the Town Council in 90 days. That's the.
And John, your target is to, I mean.
I'll have a draft here in November, but it will contain a number of essential talking points that still have to be decided. And, you know, some things that this document just doesn't go into that will be necessary for final ordinance. So I'll have something, but it's certainly not upon final, but it'll get everyone pointed in the right direction and answer the questions.
Should we then consider that November meeting, if we'll have partners for working session?
Usually you'll just sort of hash things out.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have a draft document that we can discuss and public and hear, right?
Yeah, I don't, I think a lot of, not a lot, but I think a number of issues won't be able to decide at that time. It's, I think, but there's a problem one way or the other involving the factors.
But if we bring it up, if you bring that document, it would be great at the November meeting, and you receive the input from the public and from the Town Council, will that mean that you'll be able to present a final ordinance for the Town Council to review for a public hearing at the December meeting?
Yeah, it would depend on how definitive the comments are in November, that there would certainly be a redraft for the December meeting incorporating everything that was heard at the meeting and the additional information I received before the drafting.
Because I think, I think the, I can speak, I think for all the members of the Planning Commission, that our hope is that we would have a final, a document that the Town Council would then review to have a public hearing in January. So whatever means that we would need to do, you know, speaking on the perspective of the Planning Commission, so that we don't have that happen at the December meeting, or have it happen at the November meeting, so that we can have that final document by December official.
It can't be final until we fall on over the first changes and then the second changes.
So if we have a public hearing, if we have a public hearing, we refer to the Planning Commission, so that we refer to the Planning Commission.
Right. So, so the, the Town Council will have a chance to look at it in November and give comments, and then have a chance to look at it again in December. Hopefully, all of the comments reviewed that the Town Council wants to make will have been made at the November meeting, so that the document that you receive in December should be a document that's ready to go for a public hearing in January. That would be my intent, or that would be the Planning Commission's intent. So that gives you a few times to, the time in November to make substantive changes. And hopefully, if we, Town Council members would get it before the meeting, so they could review it.
Right, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I'm gonna wait until I've got it right now. It's a question of how much gets done in November meeting typically, or comes back to December, just like a little polish.
Well, I guess, I mean, the basic question, a basic question is whether there are substantive issues that really need to be debated, or, or the substantive issues don't need to be debated, but to make sure it's in proper legal order with regard to state code.
That, that's two separate things.
Yeah.
It'll be a suspicion of legal form now as to the legislative decisions as to what Council wishes to do upon the recognition of the County Commission.
Kind of decide, we can decide that.
One doesn't know what's gonna happen until, until something.
It's a double.
Well, let's get it as complete as we can for the November meeting. And the goal would be to hash out any major issues, which may or may not be anything to debate on. And, you know, I'd like to be a fan of ready by July. Questions on this? No? Okay. Okay. ARB.
There's two applications this Wednesday, one for O'Connell's house and for renovating the Ockley's tenant house.
Okay. For those who might not have heard that, the next ARB meeting on the table will be Mr. O'Connell wanting to redo the roof of his house, and the Ockleys reviewing a, not their house, but secondary or supplementary house.
Wednesday.
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 Yeah, this guy, this coming. Laura Denny, Marie Harris. Let me remind people of certain dates that are coming up or events. The annual Halloween event here in town, which attracts 400 or 500 people, is on Wednesday, October 31st. It's interesting, I noticed today on Facebook or something, that Brown Sperryville is also gonna have a Halloween festival, the appropriate word is, of that same night, which, which strikes me as interesting. The Christmas parade is December 2nd, Sunday, and the annual Christmas party will be the following Sunday. All right? Which will be the ninth. We don't know whether there'll be a Sperryville Christmas party.
And for, for, for a parade, you know.
No one has the rights to Christmas, I suppose.
What time does the parade kick off? Is it 1?
1:30.
1:30?
Yes.
Okay. New business, go with new in this particular case to accommodate the truly great Marie Harris. Marie is with the Rappahannock Historic Society, probably all of you know. I don't know how long we have worked there, but long time this first time.
Oh.
And we've had both the town, Avon Hall, Mar House, and some others. Marie has done extraordinary work over the years where she tracks the history of a given property from, kind of day long, the legal history of properties here in town. And does remarkable work, and I think probably knows more about the history of the town than anybody. So she has worked in, she can explain this on a book about the town. And she's asked, and we're happily happy to, just give sort of a quick preview, personal preview, so that everybody here knows that such a thing is happening. And Marie's floor is yours.
I also wrote 12 articles for Mary Ann when she was editor, articles analyzing the 2,000 census.
Much to that.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Marie Harris. My working career was as a researcher in epidemiology and public health at the University of Bethesda. But I found that the skills and mindset that you have as a medical researcher translates very easily to, he's a history researcher. So I moved to the county about 16 years ago, and I've been a researcher at the Historical Society for most of that time. So I want to, I want, there's two reasons why I'm here. One, I want you to know that I am writing this history of your town. And secondly, I'd like your help. I'm gonna start by thanking Laura. Laura has been so helpful to me in going through papers from the town, helping me understand the minutes, answering numerous questions for me. She even took me over to the Rush River to show me where the wastewater pipe can actually be seen.
At one point, that was quite an issue as to where the location was. Now, nobody probably even knows.
So, like Laura, thank you so much. So I wrote, wrote, and you have with you, the current, my current ideas on the table contents of the book. They're working on it for about two years, but I still have a number of months to go. I'm trying to make this a very scholarly document, and I'm referencing everything that I find. So I have drawn on newspapers, books, websites, Rappahannock Historic Society files, lots of work over in Peggy Ralph's office with deeds and wills and Chan Street suits and civil court cases, a couple of criminal cases too, which was interesting. So this is what I've got so far. The first seven chapters are chronological, starting with the early history of the town. It actually starts with information about whether or not, about the Native Americans that inhabited this region of Virginia. And then goes up through, the chapter seven, up through the 2000s, up to today. So those are chronological chapters. And then the next chapters on the, on the back page are topic chapters. So the, your comprehensive plans, so ordinances, your water supply, wastewater system. And that was a fascinating chapter to investigate. It starts out with, it starts out with a priest on people's land and complaints from the town government in 1835, that people were not keeping their hog pants clean. And it comes up, of course, to, to your wastewater treatment. I have, the last, the last section of that chapter is devoted to Eugene Leggett. Then I have a chapter on the inn, a total chapter just devoted to the inn, because I felt that that was really an important part of the town history. And I took that chapter, as it stood at the time, over to the inn offices. And I understand that it's being reviewed within the people at the inn. Don't want to get too soon yet.
I read it to you for the first time.
Okay, well, I asked for comments and corrections and additions from the staff for that chapter. And the lots, each individual lot has now got its own history. If you remember, there's 51 lots. They've all been divided and subdivided, so there's lots and lots in here in town now. And then schools, churches, and roads and transportation, and then four appendices. So like I said, wanted to make you aware of the progress that we've got, I've got on this, but also to ask for your help, because I'm sure that you have in, in your homes and your offices, interesting tidbits about the town that I don't have access to, anecdotes that you remember about the town, your recollections. And I put my, my phone number and my email at the first line. So I would be very grateful if you, or anybody in the audience, would contact me and tell me what you remember and what you might have that I can incorporate.
Marie, what is the output? You mean literally a book?
It'll be a book.
And is, you don't have any copies, you're gonna print?
I have a lot of them.
Or is it, sorry?
Well, it's probably be published by the Historical Society, and the books that they've published, they have a printer that will print a set number of copies at a request, and they keep the, they keep the electronic file, digital file, so that if you want more, you can just call and ask for more, and they'll print more. It's a very, very nice setup they have.
Will you be, are you looking for full photographs too?
Yes. That, thank you for, thank you for bringing that point up.
Well, I think it's a marvelous project, and I'm excited about it, and I'd love to chat with you sometime and have recommendations of other people that you could chat with.
Oh, thank you so much. Where do you know?
I'm Catherine Leggett.
Leggett. Sorry.
I'm Catherine Leggett.
Leggett. Oh, yes, oh, your dad.
Yeah.
Oh. Laura and I had a tearful talk about him, how important he was to the town. I didn't have the opportunity to know him, and I celebrate that, and I know he did live town. Well, I'd be delighted to.
Great.
And you call, I think it's for.
Oh, let's spend it on July.
I've been listening to her too long than anybody, I think, I'm just.
Come to that as.
You don't go back to the 1800s, I don't mind.
But it's for a lot to tell you that, even there was a article in a newspaper recently about Little Washington being on the 1860 maps. Well, I have a source where it was called Little Washington in 1804.
1804.
There was a traveling circuit rider, Memphis Minister, Francis Asburg. He was, he traveled all over the East Coast, and he kept a journal. And in his journal, he says, I can't quite quote him, "Took the path to Little Washington and met there with good entertainment and fine fellowship." And it makes sense, because that is the time that big Washington was being built, so they named us.
I'm gonna, quite clear, I should be, is who which preceded the other.
Oh, they were so close.
They were close enough, wasn't it, between when they decided and when it occurred and so on.
So I know that the inn was given a lot of flack in 1978 about, oh, they had Little Washington, and the townspeople simply did not know their own history. Thank you very much.
We're excited.
Hi, terrific. Do we have an idea about publication dates or?
It'll be definitely in 2019.
Close now.
It's a lot of work, but it's a labor of art.
Well, it's a premature schedule, a book party.
Too bad you're not taking profit from it.
Pardon?
Too bad you're not taking profit from it.
And my, my heart is full profit.
1790 is Little Washington, 1790.
Well, the town has got, the town was established legally in 1796.
Yeah. I might mention that we are bringing an author out who's written a book that is current called The Young George Washington. And it's about his early life from age 14, before he married. And he'll speak in the theater on October 27th, a Sunday, and it is open to the public and free. So I thought it would be very interesting for people to be able to access him the day before he's speaking at Mount Vernon and ask him questions, particularly about the town's early history.
It's changed from here.
Oh, what is it on there?
I have it as being here. So maybe it's not as good or.
It turned out to have a lot more. We sent an email blast out, and.
Amazing.
Okay, well, we couldn't all fit in here. I'm sorry, I told you, yeah.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
So we'll be in there.
And there's a lunch afterwards at the, which is not free.
I thought you started tradition that all events are open for free to rent on the town. Is that just every 40 years?
Well, we thought perhaps it would be slow to pick up, but it filled with first hours, and after the last one, the lunch.
Right.
But it would bring people in on a Saturday for the market, for the shops, for everything else, in good numbers.
That's right. Okay, let's move on to old business, task force committee updates. Sure, they are, Marie. At this point, I think there are.
At this point, I think there are two task forces that I know of that are still working with infrastructure and the financial. The financial, I think, is on hold, waiting until it gets final reports from the, yes, correct me if I'm wrong, waiting until they get reports from the other task forces. And infrastructure?
Yep. Hopefully, by the end of the month, probably a preliminary report, we won't, may not have any numbers in it. But the major work that I've done in the past couple of weeks is I've met with Don Earl, went down to his office, ESS, in Culpeper, and sat down and talked through current status of the treatment plan. He and I had some good ideas about what could be some improvements that could make a big impact on the energy load for the plant. So we're going to investigate that a little bit, giving a couple of links to a couple of firms that I'm going to have some conversations with about whether or not some of their technologies would be applicable to the plant. Again, with the ultimate goal to be improving the performance of the plant. I also have emailed out, I'm waiting for an appointment time where I'm going to bring in an electrical distributor and somebody from Rockwell Automation. We're going to go through the plant and look at our current state of controls, which is, again, part of just ongoing things we need to do, but also how that may be allowing us to improve our operations. So that's a big thing on that status. And then today, I met with Greg from Country Water, and we went through the water system. So we started out at the pump house and took a look at the status of that facility where we're at. We thought, where the lines are running and everything. We went up and looked at the water tower. In fact, there's actually something I'm going to add to new business when we get to that job.
Have it.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyway, went up there, took a look at, looked at the statuses of that part of the plant. And then we gave another discussion about this second well that we talked about going forward. So some of this, I may be able to pick up with some very concrete estimates of cost, but if not, at least we'll try and get into some sort of priority for what needs to get fixed, what needs to be repaired, so that, you know, we have a sort of a roadmap to hold. And then technically that to Gale, and then as we move into the new year, we may start to want to put some numbers on it and do some lagging. But that's, that's really the biggest part. I think, you know, Nancy and Alan, I have now, we are looking at getting a couple of light bulbs, LED light bulbs that we can try and a couple of our fixtures, see how they look, how they work, whether that's going to be suitable. So there's a handful of different things that are going on. We'll document all that in our next report.
So it's fair to say the infrastructure committee has looked at all of the elements?
We've looked at everything, yeah.
Air, water.
Roads, sidewalks.
You're right on the clock on that.
On behalf of the Town Council, I'm Mr. Mayor. I hope I can express once more my thanks to all the people who served on the different task forces. They did extraordinary amount of work over the last six months. And it was extremely helpful as we go forward. I know some of them are not here tonight, but I am both personally and as a member of the Town Council, grateful for their time and effort on behalf of the Town.
I would second that. I mean, I just, I think what's been so great about these, and we're not totally finished with, is engaged in that people who have a stake in the town. And the more you get engaged and participate, the more of a stake you feel, the more involved you are, or you contribute, or you enjoy being part of the town. That's it on. That subject is the Eagle, Eastman Eagle Gay Street vacation request. And I see on New Business Continued, we've got Sub Street Vacation Policy. Put those two things together. Brad, you want to bring people up to date as to what the planning commission is about?
Sure. So the planning commission met at, and at the birth of the Town Council came up with a resolution regarding any action that the Town Council or a recommendation of the actions that the Town Council should, excuse me, that an applicant should take and order to have a sub-street abandoned or vacated by the town. The process would really consist of four parts. The application being submitted to the Architectural Review Board. And I think this became very clear when the four applicants, what they were doing was something very simple and all of a sudden, all of the ramifications that had pertained to the Architectural Review Board came forward. Second, that all adjoining property owners and others affected have been contacted to voice their support or opposition. The third part of the recommendation is that if it is approved by the Architectural Review Board, it will be presented to the Planning Commission. And any vacation or abandonment must be found to be in the public interest. And if approved by the Planning Commission, it will then be forwarded to the Town Council for discussion and public hearing, if appropriate. That protocol, that four-step protocol, is encompassed in a draft resolution which the Planning Commission presents to the Town Council, copies of which were on the table when you came in. It reads, Town of Washington, a draft resolution regarding the abandonment or vacation of sub-streets. I won't read the entire resolution, I hope, but it is there for people to read. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you want to take a couple of minutes for everybody to look at it.
I do, I think. First of all, has everybody out there got a copy of this? I think it'd be worth it if people just, we didn't just spend a couple of minutes, people could see now.
Sorry.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I just had a couple of questions. And I also tweaked a little bit because I took it to the minutes, and that was where I found what the process was, where it starts and where it's submitted to the ARB first. So I sort of added a little bit of that in to make this flow. But my question was where it says, and then number one, no permanent structure should be proposed. Should we say at this time, at the end of paragraph one, number one?
I'm sorry.
Where's that type of? Very tense.
Oh, so you're talking about having something?
Where it says no.
Oh, I see, no shall be, should be proposed in the street.
Okay. In the street?
In the sub-street.
Right. Ever? I mean, that's my question. Ever?
That's, yeah, that's, right, no permanent structure should be proposed.
What's the reason for that? If you've abandoned it, given it to someone?
I'm not sure.
I'm just asking, what's the reason for that, no permanent structure? If you've abandoned the street, sold it, or given it to somebody, why would you?
The original layout.
It would still be able to see the original layout of the town grid. I think there are some people who feel in the town that even if we vacate a sub-street, that it's important to maintain the skeleton of the original street grid. So if you put a building on a sub-street, you're effectively compromising the original street grid laid out in 1706.
Is that because George Washington laid it out or just because?
I'm not going to invoke George Washington. But I did have had conversations with several citizens who, whose primary opposition to ever having an abandonment or vacation of a sub-street is because they want to see the integrity of that original grid. This, I believe, is a compromise. Alan Compton did a wonderful job of putting this together, so I'm, I feel a little bit, it was, this was discussed, and I think that's part of the reason why there's a sense of no permanent structure in the sub-street.
I'd like to point out that this considerably expands the purview of the Architectural Review Board. This is, has nothing to do with architecture, doesn't fall under the purview. So I think it's a mistake to involve that process. They do not control sidewalks or walls of less than two feet, and certainly not streets. So architecture is a very defined category and should remain so. Or you have an Architectural Review Board and Historical Review Board, and that may be the way to go. There are many who think it's overly restrictive in its current.
Well, I would echo that comment that's going to, anyway, in a common sense, I don't think we should be as, when it comes to use, do something with a sub-street or not, I don't think the ARB should be, perhaps they should be involved. Let me try and sort this out. I don't see that there should be an original gate through which one goes, do you think? Because it's not their job. And in most cases, I don't think you're really talking about something where there is a building. Now, it may be that somebody wants to do something that has implications for the ARB, so take the case in hand. The, as I understand the proposal, it's really turn over the sub-street, divide it up a little bit. And this would allow the owner of the shed to do things that that person might otherwise be able to do. And to me, that is an ARB issue, that's existing building, what happens to the building, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not, it's related to turn over the sub-street, but it's not the issue in a way. So I think that, and then maybe other examples where one might say, well, you want to get the ARB involved, I'm actually not sure what they are. But I certainly don't think they should be the first gate through which one goes. It's, it's, no, it's my guess.
I hear what you're saying, and I think they're valid points. One of the things, looking back at the zoning ordinance and talking about the creation of the Architectural Review Board, the general purpose of the Architectural Review Board is to preserve protected historic places and areas. Whether that means buildings or not is not really the point. I think the point that you're making, Patrick, is important, which is that there is concern about the preservation of the historic district. Does that fall under?
Definitely not.
So the question I was going to ask, does that fall under the Architectural Review Board, or does it fall under some other, does it fall under the Town Council to review something to ensure that it maintains the integrity of the historic district?
The architectural integrity is the interpretation.
I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're also talking about?
There's no end to it. It becomes very nebulous if you extend it further than the architecture. This is coming from someone who served as chairman of the board for 14 years and was on the board for 21 years. Very often, the board members are confused about extent of their control. And they start asking questions like, where is the septic field going to go? And questions of where would the electric wires go? And at that point, they have to be reminded that these are not architectural elements and that their scope is architectural compatibility and that it stops there. But they are not policing the town. They are ensuring that rebuilding in the town, every development in the town is within the architectural compatibility of the town.
The historic district.
Of the historic district.
So the historic district pertains just to buildings?
Exactly. And architecture. And some mistakes have been made along the way with, when that is not clear. And it has to be clearly defined. So this is muddying the water further.
By that exclusion?
Well, yes, it does suppose, I mean, where does it stop at this point? Shrubbery, planted trees, berms, low retaining walls, all of these things are excluded. So the sub-street is not the architecture of the town. So it's a simple matter to modify that kind of thing. And certainly, you make it more complex, as John points out, by having to go before one board before you bring it to Town Council. I fear that for a town of 133, we are getting extremely complicated. And in the process, oftentimes, common sense. in the process, oftentimes, common sense is sacrificed. So sometimes, the abandonment of a sub-street could be enhanced by a beautiful little park or a grassy meadow. But if that isn't allowed, how many sub-streets do we have? Three?
Uh, last time I looked, it was similar to more than three.
It's five, isn't it?
Five. I think it was about nine.
The average length is probably less than a hundred feet. So we've added a lot of layers to the process and complications.
You, I am just presenting a document.
I understand.
So. And I appreciate your, your longevity on the Architectural Review Board and your perspective.
Thank you. Well, I would recommend that we relay this concern to the drafters of the documents and not attempt to redefine or expand the duties of the ARB. Not limit them, but clearly define them as having to do with architectural compatibility.
Seems that sometimes there's a confusion between architecture and design. And design, of course, is encompassing such more that there's certainly been some crossover in the past, isn't there? There are.
Well, I'd also just make a basic point, that I don't think, I think it's the town council's responsibility to decide whether or not to do something about sub-streets.
As the reg.
And ownership. And, and that is, of course, getting a public opinion, getting best advice, listening to planning permission, people from the ARB have thoughts on the subject, listen to them, but the notion that that body is really very complex, that body is in a decision-making position to say, no, we're not going to do it, they're not elected. I mean, they're, you know, it's just, who's running this? So that, I, I do think it's, 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 it's wrong. But I want to say something else, because I think that there are a lot of undercurrents here, which people are aware of or are not. The ARB is a very important body, and I started going for two years, and I lived through rewriting the last one-hundred-and-ten-page document. I'll never want to do that. And it's very important, and I think if this town, if there's an energy level, there's a comprehensive plan, and there are ideas about additional buildings in town, development, and what have you, combined development, in a good way, that the role the ARB will become terribly important in assessing any new buildings, any projects, any new buildings. And I think going forward, a challenge, I've said this to many people at different times, I think the ARB does a very good job, but it is not populated by a whole lot of folks that have a lot of experiences here, or some. And I think a long-term issue for the town is how does one upgrade the skill sets that the ARB has in order to deal with things that might, might happen? And I'm a great believer that that's something that needs to be focused on, but I think this particular thing has got a, sort of gets in the way of what we should be doing. Anyway, are there other, Perry, Ken, Brad, thoughts?
Well, I agree, and I think it really doesn't fall under the ARB. You think about the town, if it's a sub-street, that is a piece of infrastructure, so it's really the town council's responsibility to that piece of underutilized or unused infrastructure. And it's really to them, that application, that request should come.
Right.
So we start to work, to go through it. Now, the ARB may want to have an opinion on something, I think that's fine, that would be just part of, of, of comment period, but I think, yeah, I agree, I think it's really outside the ARB's purview.
No, and I appreciate that, I respect that. So the, the follow-up question that I have to you is that how do we ensure that, that there is comment from the ARB? Because you may not necessarily have an ARB member come to a town council meeting at which.
We don't have to ensure that, do they have?
Yeah, why is it not?
No, no, it's up, again, it's up to, I think it's up to them, if they want to have a comment to something, just like anyone else, the ARB would be a citizen in that respect, and they have, you know, as a comment from the chairman, you know, an opinion on that, whatever. Because maybe you have a sub-street, or a sub-street, and there's a building that encroaches on it, that might have, you know, someone wants to make an improvement, if the sub-street is abandoned, you know, does that have an effect? So I think there's room for them, if they feel, and they'll be notified, it'll be public knowledge, they can have an input and opinion, but I don't necessarily think the initial application should come from them, I think it should come directly to the council. You could take the paperwork, say, well, okay, you know, the formality of the application or request, so that it's organized, and not just someone on the back of a piece of yellow paper say, hey, you know, please abandon this. So maybe procedurally, we have something that just is a little structured, so we all see something consistent, because if we do this again and again, through the various such instructions we have, at least it's consistent. And I think that's probably over time, probably where we've had issues, this is, we've done this way this time, and then we've done something different the next time. So consistency, I think, is, works towards favor.
Along that same note, number three, item number three, would maybe enter into it the same way, where it says the planning commission must consider, the planning commission has already considered and written the current plan, so why are they reconsidering something?
Change most to many, let's ask our editorials, specials?
Well, even if we have nine sub-streets, most of them, I think, driveway storms on the town's, I mean. How often do these sub-streets come up? I mean, a lot of government involvement is something that we might only look at every five, six years on one sub-street. But let's. I think we have the time to do that.
Yeah, I think time issue, but I think it's, I mean, I just look at Aces, look at, but I think it's not a bad idea to have a procedure in light of a tedious environment we're in. It just, I think, makes life a little easier for everybody.
And that was the original genesis of this, is to get some kind of protocol to go there. This may not be what the town council, from what I'm hearing from fellow members, is what they're looking for, and I appreciate that, but let's not lose sight of the fact that, as you said, that there should be some, whenever a sub-street comes up, an application for an abandonment, that there should be some protocol, some procedure that the town council should follow.
Absolutely. So, but, so I think, you know, the four points is good, but maybe just, okay, well, you know, it doesn't have considered, if you take that out, I mean, it's three points.
So maybe the animation comes to, comes to the town council, the town council.
Decides what to do, who to get to. I would start with make four, number one, the town council.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they pull in the ARB, and they pull in the planning commission, that's appropriate. Why are they pulling you?
You're pulling the ARB. Okay. Well, no, just say, it's worth, has, has might be, maybe they're not, maybe they.
That's a separate thing, that's when somebody wants to have a structure.
Follow that, I mean, their request to, to ask for two and one, define them as number one. Yeah. But I think, I think, sorry, Mary, I say, if it comes to council, and then you can decide, well, we should let the planning commission look at it, and that's it, or, or not, we just deal with it as town council.
I have a question for John, again. Number two, where it says it all parking, which has to be notified, isn't that something that we would have to do with the public hearing if it's, if it'll come in?
This is in a form of resolution instead of an ordinance, so actually, you don't have to do any advertised public hearing.
No, not for this, I mean, for when they come, when the sub-street.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's, yeah, there's two different procedures for abandoning a sub-street, and you have to meet the legally required advertisement for the appropriate, whichever one you're using.
But wouldn't we normally be notifying any adjacent property owners?
No, it's usually just, it's.
Just the public notice of the public hearing?
It's not like the resuming, fifteen point two, it's where you have to send notices in certain instances, just the.
And is that what it would be, that's all we have to do?
Okay.
The zoning administrator, doesn't the zoning administrator, or shouldn't the zoning administrator play a role in this, and that could be incorporated into the town council, then, number four? Or not?
I, I had an edit, the council thought that this resolution, that nothing would go out, come to the council till the application was complete, and I assumed that procedure would be followed, this too, so I had a slight edit to incorporate that. On number four. Well, a zoning administrator can afford within the application of comments and a recommendation to council. I might make comments, but I typically would not make recommendations to council like John currently did, it's just a question of personal preference as far off, but, but it would go through the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator would be sure that it is complete before it comes to council, the council gets to work on.
So that's the first step, go through, apply to the zoning.
The application comes to the zoning administrator.
Which in this case is what's happening.
Yes.
I think, I think we're getting too complicated here somehow. The last medium, and I'm struggling to remember, we just verbally came up with three or four criteria, and some are embedded here, that, that were rather simple, and I, I don't remember them all, but it's essentially, you have a complete package from the outset, that all the neighbors know about and have been. Where does the sub-street lead? Does the sub-street, might there be a use for that sub-street five or ten or fifteen years from now, or one would regret turning into, you know what? Does the town receive benefit, either financial, or just general interest, or both? And there may be a couple others, but I mean, it's just like five or six things you check off, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. And just as we do, and have done, you know, some of the SOP things, so I think this is.
It's going the wrong direction.
I think it's going the wrong direction, it is a dumb thing, I'm gonna, I'm not a good mayor, please. I will say what I've said many times during my eight years with this. This town wants to grow. The people are. The people want more population, and they want more business, and they want more energy and more economy, and the proportion of business and residential will be a debate. The town had such a long history of being so difficult to work with, and developed a reputation based on fact, that I always try to get us pointed towards, how do we use common sense to accomplish commonly, common goals? And the governmental process is such that, in terms of number meetings you have, and you bring in this group, that group, public notices on all for openness and public participation, when you can get so tied up into the knots when there are not that many issues to be dealt with. And that, at the end of the day, and some things are absolutely black and some things are absolutely white, or A or B, but at the end of the day, common sense and, and common wisdom is what we should be trying to get to. And I think this is just gets so, so uncomplicated. And, and that's a general context of at least how I view things.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah, anybody, anybody here is welcome to jump in.
You only have four sub-streets left. For example, the, the Jet Street, the sub-street to the west, becomes Piedmont Avenue. The Middle Street, the sub-street to the east, becomes, goes down to the highway. Patrick now has the west end of the street, sub-street. So you just have the two ends of Calver Street, the north end of Gay Street.
And you have the two ends of Wheeler Street.
What does one become?
Both are designated, both are recorded as sub-streets.
A public use mix if the road here is called.
No, that's not, but they are sub-streets. No, that's, that's.
Wheeler Street goes.
Wheeler's the last one of it.
Wheeler goes to Mass.
Wheeler's the driveway going to the Mass each way.
Okay.
I think this one right over here goes to Vincent's Garage, you know.
Porter Street to the west leads to Jones's.
Exactly. We're getting down, down in detail, but there are more than three.
Four, I said.
But there's not many more, that, that, for a hundred and thirty, I think we can deal with them individually, if they ever come up.
Well, we've had one sub-street request, this is the second, am I right, in the last eight or ten, ten years.
I think there was another one.
I know, there was some discussion of that issue. And I think frankly, the, that process, and how we viewed that, and the kind of criteria we went through, is perhaps relevant to all the other things, all those we're dealing with. John, you've been through all those, so now you can pick one of those, but would you have suggestions, thoughts?
Well.
I mean, you're the one who went through these.
About this, about that, about this, about that. I'm, I'm a big believer in keeping things simple, if somebody's got, has a, something they want to take up, I think it's, who's, look, everybody in the whole process, that they could answer yes or no as quickly as possible. Having said that, there are formalities that any government has to follow, but they can be more complex or less complex, and to the extent that they're less complex and more direct, I think it's beneficial to that, because then, plus it spends a whole lot of time. And if there is a policy, I think that guides the applicant. And, um, if there is a policy, I think that guy is the applicant. Either encourage some applications or discourage them. There are a lot of things that might happen with by an otherwise coming for, planning commission council, really sort of get handled, the zoning administrator's right.
Any opportunity, whomever. Though I'm in school here.
They really get handled at the zoning administrator level. The zoning administrator says, look, this is not going to conform with these ordinances. This law is not going to conform with this, we set policies in this resolution, so it helps them respect that it's a full process. And if these are the things that are going to be considered by council, then it sort of takes everybody on the notice where it's going. So in a sense, the resolution is not binding on council, it's just guidance. And it still comes back to that, allows that proposition that every situation can be, you can have particular considerations, so, um... But I think it's helpful to everybody, if they're straightforward and pretty simple, so you, as an applicant, can look at them, so they oversee it all the time.
So it seems like there's two different routes that we're going. One is, do we have some guidelines, as I hear from the mayor saying, do we have some guidelines that we as members of the town council look at whenever someone comes with an application to us? Versus what I'm hearing from you, and what this seems to do, which is set up a checklist of things for an applicant to do. So there are two different directions I see. And, um, I think, I hear very clearly that, that this resolution went down the wrong route. That what we should be looking at, if you still want the planning commission to do it, or whether the town council on its own wants to do it. I think the mayor's brought up five, the five key questions at least to start with, that members of the town council. If the issue of a substreet abandonment comes up, these are the five or six questions. The ones that you have written down, or does the applicant have a complete package? Two, are the neighbors notified? Three, where does the substreet go? In other words, was it beyond the substreet, that might be a consequence? Four, what are the five or six, and at this point, I'm a nugget about town, I want to make sure I have this there. What are the five or six chief characteristics of this particular substreet that the town council should consider? I think that is what you're trying to say, but I'm not positive. And finally, what is the compensation or benefit to the town by carrying out this action?
Well, I was confused with the next to last one, this humor, in terms of what I said. But, but I think that's fundamentally it, and then maybe a couple others. I don't mean to say here that all, but I, I just think, you got those basic tests. As soon as we could write those up, in fact, I thought I saw a draft, the planning commission, someone had, so just like that. And, uh, in terms of the process, the current process seems to me is when goes the zoning administrator? Is that not right, John?
Is it a complete, sorry, is it a complete package, and then the council deals with it?
Or it goes wherever it's relevant, whichever way.
Right, now it goes to you.
But it comes, everything else, the zoning administrator basically, for a new land use case. And then from there, the zoning administrator follows whatever procedures are dictated by, that it was necessary, for that particular case. Now that it becomes like the council.
Henry?
I agree with you there, that it's the governing body that should decide on what happens in the town, not appointed officials or people who volunteer. Why don't you have a process like, um, you have the planning commission, and at least let them hear it before it comes to the council itself? Very much, but they don't have the right to say to people, we're not going to let you have this because we don't agree with you. And in that way, they also can make recommendations to the people who are asking for this abandonment, or asking for something, where their application may be helped. So they don't come into this meeting cold, that, you know, they write out a proposal and they hand it to you. I think there should be a body between you and, 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 and the applicant. I don't know, very much like the local, the county government, but, um, but not give them the power to say to people, you have to change this, or you have to change that. But just to make recommendations, so, and also, it may free you up your tires more, I mean, you know, you've, we're talking about some of these things may go on forever. And it seems to me, if they embed it before they happen, you know, that, that it would expedite the, the whole process. And does the town have special exceptions, or like the county government? You know, like somebody applies for the special exception of a special use permit? Can't you make substreets a special exception with a certain amount of, for this exception, this is what you have to meet? And easily pass it through that way, you can now have, you know, another full document, so to speak. I'm not saying I've said many in sense, but...
John?
Oh, I was just gonna say, isn't that sort of the checkmark that we're getting from the zoning? Isn't that the checkmark we're getting from the zoning administrator anyway? I mean, we're gonna say, okay, yeah, this passes, this passed us, council, it's time for you to deal with it, rather than putting in another step in the process, right? Just follow rather than... Again, you know, it's just something dealt with twice in a decade, so. There's four to go, but some of them are driveways. Probably about to revoke John's substreet.
A lot of them are. And they have garages that do it.
Right.
So they're monetarily, I guess you gotta have a building here.
See, I can take exception, if you're calling them the planning commission, then they should have a say in the planning of what happens in the town. There should not be, you know, you say to people, I'm putting you on a planning commission, they're supposed to help plan and do that. And you say, well, we don't need the planning commission anymore, we're just, you know, why as well get rid of the planning commission? And every time you have a problem like that, just go to the, to the zoning administration. You know, if, if, I believe in open government, and I really think that if you have a planning commission, it would make your job easier, and, and facilitate your job, and also help the applicant, basically.
I think what he's saying has great merit. Because as I look at this document, and think ahead to a planned unit development, that's gonna get bogged, so bogged down unless, um, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about something I read about the new Federal Reserve chairman. He said, there, and this is not a criticism of you, but he said, there is no common sense in making, when making economic policy. There's only science, because there is no common sense. One man's common sense is not another man's common sense. And that, and when people try to make decisions on, on their common sense, they come into deep conflict. So it's all science, so it's all planning. Get, get that plan in place before you even make your PUD, so that it doesn't take 10 years to do it. Because, I mean, this, this substreet issue is already going on, um, for quite a while. I think, I think, um, a simpler plan needs to be done, so it can be taken care of now. And then a plan for your future development, because you're right, we need to grow. Uh, I've been secretary for the infrastructure, and there are all these terribly expensive projects. Craig Jackson said $45,000 for the, for the controls, for the wastewater treatment plant. $45,000, you know, he just pops that up, and the well, huge, huge expense. So... We need, we need a little science in here, before going forward.
It's very important, I've tried to further things that you said, I've read this, and I'm trying to distill it to, to something to pick up as much as possible, but to keep the meat on the bone. Before banning or selling or conveying non-public right, license or easement, council shall find them the affirmative as to each of the following. Number one, is made for a public purpose, or still has to confer a benefit by the public. Two, the town receives full and fair compensation monetarily, or by way of benefit to the town and its residents, or by combination now. Three, the rights of no property owner will be violated or impaired if the substreet is banned or sold. Four, there's no foreseeable public use or necessity related to the substreet, considering, among other things, the changing nature of land use and development, and future requirements. And then if there's anything else.
Say something about, in that fourth point, something about an extension beyond the substreet, as part of that. Any extension beyond that substreet.
I'm sort of ready to jump on with a, a problem, surprise anybody, I think that makes sense. I think it's impressive how quickly you've got that written down, in, in legal and inappropriate language. And maybe we're missing something, maybe we should be fine soon, but I, I don't know, how to rush you, I mean, I think it's pretty succinct. And what, um, with, and I, Henry, I don't think this is, what we're looking for here is a process, or a set of criteria about which we make decisions, so I think it's we, not the ARV, not the PTAD, or, uh, it's we, not really the planning commission. And those criteria are consistently applied, and every time somebody comes up with a substreet proposal. And then, it will be in the judgment of, of members of the town council, as to whether, um, the application passes those tests. And not everybody will read every time on the subject, but it's pretty clear cut.
So it's sort of back to that idea of the checklist.
Well, it's back to where we were at the last meeting, actually.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't know whether the, a little young, whether to say, all right, that's on the table, let's vote yes or no, or whether we should edit it in writing? And, no, take one more?
See it in writing.
See it in writing, take one more look at it next month? And be prepared to deal with the issue that's driving this, and this is Mr. Eaton's application for the substreet. I feel very badly, I, I don't even remember when they first brought this thing up. And we should deal with it, really yes or no, but this has been hanging out there. So if we have this to look at in the November meeting, and utilize the circuit, circulate it as soon as possible. It's a, make it available to public, I knew it would be thousands of people, or what, available to public. And anybody that has suggestions as to how to improve it prior to or after next meeting, do so. And that we'd be in a position to, um, load on it then, and then move forward. On this, we'll make a side comment, I, I, I appreciate the fact that several members of the planning commission who fully felt strongly about this, and had a lot of involvement, and are not here to kind of give their talent argument, but, um, they're not here. And I think we all feel pretty, I think it's pretty clear where people stand on some things. Is that acceptable with people?
Yes.
So that does not really require a vote, does it?
Oh, we didn't, or do we?
You need to agree, at least. Need to agree that you're going to come back with a new policy back to that one thing.
And that will be on the agenda before Mr. Eaton's application? So we can vote that, get a vote, and then use that as a basis for decision on Mr. Eaton's application.
All right. So we resolve that, right?
President, wanna make a motion?
Would we by consensus, that he's going back to the new draft?
Who's coming back? John Bennett. You pointed this direction, I want to make sure you're pointing that direction.
No, he's, he's, from Mr. Bennett. Do you all agree, do you all agree by consensus that what you want?
Yes, yes. So let's go to the planning commission and council, and anyone, any other? Why would we go to the planning commission? Planning commission is happy to wash its hands of it.
Those both points that we have talked through.
All right, do we are recording, do we need a, we just, we just, we don't take a comment, all right. I would have made a suggestion, given the time, if Marianne doesn't mind, and one of we shouldn't skip, um, the update on the legislation, or do it very briefly under one?
I think that's a good idea, because I'm waiting to hear from the Bennett Reference Association. So I think we should table it.
So we really have two things left. One is the town expression of interest in running 290 K Street, I'll express that, and then we will be going in, then we'll do it public forum, and then we'll do it in a closed session.
Who's gonna do the box with me?
The box with me.
Oh, the box with me. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to point out that he was making himself available. I think it is important to bring it up as soon as possible.
Well, I think what we do is, I don't know, it's kind of long, or wins.
Well, one of the houses is Kenny Verbs.
Right.
He's coming next, or just coming?
Oh, he's coming back.
Kenny is back now.
Oh, so my guy offered to bring his team and remove those boxwoods in Vermont, but I think, I didn't know that Greg Williams would do the same.
And somebody, and somebody else, I forget who, has talked to, like I remember that, Steve Price. And, and he is prepared to remove, I think it's Campbell's Flit, I think she wouldn't mind me saying that. But I think what sort of the issue here is, is the removal of the, as I understand it, there's not, for that and that, city community, apart from these things, maybe. it, there's not, for that and that, city family, apart from these things, maybe. I wish, hope there were this. But once you got it, you gotta get rid of that thing quickly, and there's a protocol for doing that. And everybody has a stake in that protocol. So just instinctively, I'm wondering whether it's good I to have person A takes his out and person B takes his out and the person C takes out and hers out. That maybe the focus of this get-together with your person is what should that protocol be and how to ensure it's properly executed.
I would say, I, I agree with you, but I would say even for that, do an inventory because some of the boxwoods I've seen, it turned overnight.
Oh, that happened today.
Mine has been.
Oh, with the, with the.
Yes. I have something with my boxwoods that's been, the process is over a year. So it would be helpful if the inventory was done to determine whether what I have is just bad management by me of my boxwoods or whether they actually have a disease.
The person that, that we've turned to is Kenner Love, the extension agent.
Yeah.
Who will come, or you can bring him clippings and he takes them, sends them to Virginia Tech, and they within twenty-four to forty-eight hours give you a report whether this box is in place.
What, what I, yeah, but that information comes to me and I appreciate it, but what I'm thinking is if we were able to do an inventory of the entire town.
Kenner has been doing that, walking up and down the streets, and when I asked him about the disposal and the proper methods, he said, Marianne, it's so, it's over all the streets right now, it's really, every, almost every bush is infected in this town.
But I have not seen him or, or heard from him.
Right, well, that, you need to.
Well, why don't we have, I mean, it's always a talk to him.
Yeah.
Kenny Fowles also offered advice, you get your person to tell Patrick.
This one wants to write up a little type word.
It strikes me as a people who, that we should have a meeting, we should have a meeting of interested gardeners, everyone who wants to show up and have a common knowledge base. And I'm sure you get Kenner, you're obviously an often here person, I assume it's better.
His point is we have to act within the week, and that as long as you have one mass infestation, everyone is at risk.
Right, I get that.
Yeah.
Can I accept that Mount Salem Avenue, there are several houses that have, including your fiscal minister and your Stolson.
Well, I haven't looked at it, it started slow, like two years ago, this last week, I know two bushes that are just around, I think that they got burned or something or so. And I mean, just in the last couple of days, I mean, it's really moved quick. And that's everything across my front, but it looks at my neighborhood, Austin Street, it's affected issue. I'm actually, you're sorry?
I'm sorry.
Do you have English boxwood or is it?
No, mine are.
I think it's mainly English boxwood.
It's mainly, but it is affecting America too.
They're stressful, but, 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 but.
He, he offers several preventative treatments. He's applying once a week, two hours, and they are, they have signs of it stopped, and if they don't have signs of it, they haven't been affected. So let's encourage them.
But you do have to do that quite weekly?
For the rest of the shrubs, right?
Well, until the conditions alter also, this damn get constant ringing.
Yeah.
That's best than that.
Do you want to have an open meeting with people here or people?
That's what I think we should do, I would propose, well, we got to let people know about it, about.
We still have info.
About Wednesday morning.
Say sooner than better.
Yes.
You don't want to do it tomorrow? Well, we can, we'll get it out, we will know.
Right, we have to, get it out tomorrow, and then maybe we could get Kenner's log to be published, and his, and Kenner's.
Is it possible for the people of the town who work during Wednesday morning, or sometimes during the morning, doesn't work, for, if for those people who work, is it possible to do it late afternoon, four o'clock, something like that? Maybe we'll take it, maybe we'll put it on our.
Well, we can get the word out in peace with town. Maybe, maybe we need to watch.
I might pass the wire out.
Also, this is a subject, there's been so much conversation, there's already a network of such experience.
So you want to say Wednesday afternoons? Town hall, because we need a box, like experts for people to talk to. For when? For Wednesday afternoon, might be like four, four thirty?
Hope that is better. Still working on that.
I mean, I, you know, I'd be happy to deliver a fire.
So it's four thirty, you sort of brought this up, was that a part of?
I, Jerry was saying five would be better, but I don't know if that works with your gardener's schedule.
Patrick? He definitely leaves.
Does my student, four thirty?
Four thirty is fine.
Oh, Kenner just on the four thirty time, I imagine so.
He probably does, but maybe in his case.
Yeah, I would think.
He's already walking, speaking.
Let's say four thirty then. Four thirty here, Wednesday afternoon.
This Wednesday, yes. Because next Wednesday, you know.
Day after tomorrow. Spread the word, and we'll do it ourselves, we'll spread people, spread the word.
I just want to say how fast it spreads because I was at one of the houses on Bay Street that has it, and the small shrubs have had it for at least a week or two weeks. But I think it was Friday, I noticed the shrubs that are probably ten feet high next to them, just had a little, maybe a foot long of that dry wood. In forty-eight hours, it's gone down the street, almost run high. All the way down, almost to Georgines, like Laura and I walked today. It's so fast.
It's like Invasion of the Body, it's like a bad movie. It's so many, beautiful.
Okay, good. Patrick, thank you for offering your fellow.
Do you know who's going to coordinate that, have people here in the presentation or something?
So you can talk.
Marianne Washington. What do you want to, we're talking, you had a Kenner, your guy.
And also, there's a gentleman from North Carolina to, he does all the historic plantations, and he also does John Anderson's at Jasmine Hill, all his beautiful boxwoods, he comes up twice and treats them. He is this week at Oatman's Plantation, and I've been in contact with him, and he said he was stopped at my place, and I'll also give him his number to some other people, the first of the week or the middle of the week. So if he shows up on Thursday.
Would you, would you proactively reach out to him and talk about it?
I definitely.
Good score to the paper. All right, the next subject, let me do this quickly. As everybody knows, I think everybody knows, the town has been investigating, is interested in, has the objective of finding office space for the town, for the town. Everybody knows Laura operates upstairs, everybody's limited. There've been a number of conversations, a number of different people. The county is in the midst of assessing its space needs. It will soon be hiring a number of organizations to, or maybe just one, to look at the space needs. There is a building committee that Ron Frazier, Gary Curry, John Mozinski, myself, and Alan Conker are on. It will be quite some time before the county has an answer to the question, what are their needs, who's going where, how to take advantage of existing spaces, what should you do? They don't even have the higher, the focus of figures out. So if it could be, who knows how long, a year before there's an answer, the county has is what they want to do with existing offices. We have reached out to them at a number of different levels, Brad has, I have, I think Fred has, expressed interest in the old county administrative building, otherwise known as McCarthy Office. We have offered to buy it if they should be so inclined, or it's premature for that because they don't know what their needs are. But we have said, well, what if we could rent it? And for a year, a year and a half, and now you want to throw us out, throw us out, to be sort of simplistic about it. And at the last building, we may, we expressed that, we were interested, as a sign, Ricky Jenkins, right, emphasized the need to have somebody in that building, is this going to rot if it sits there for a year or so? So there seems to be some interest in entertaining, some interest in entertaining. A number short from us, they asked me to come up with a written expression of interest from the town, and that's what you have in front of you, pretty self-explanatory, I want to create a background. And the idea would be to pass that out to Gary Curry and the building committee and try to persuade and to encourage them to move along here and rent it to us. So that's what this draft, like written largely by Brad and Alan Conker, a little kibbity, a couple of those, Marianne. So I recommend that we, we can discuss it further, but there's no need to discuss it further, and we vote to endorse this letter, and we'll send it to Gary Curry and proper people along. Be the idea.
If the only two comments I have, sorry, I jumped, got there before you did. The only two comments I would make is I'd love to be able to have some kind of deadline for them, or some kind of, maybe not a deadline, but a target for them to respond back to us in letter. The second thing is, I feel uncomfortable saying we're interested in purchasing the building, that I'd be interested, we'd be interested in exploring the possible purchase of the building or something to that point. I understand why you want to put that in there, but I don't want to make it, and again, neither point is enough, and if there's no other objection, I will withdraw my, my expressions.
Well, we did, I don't care, I put it in there, actually, and I don't feel strongly on one or the other, we have, we have expressed interest, we have said to them, and I've made it clear, speaking for myself as mayor, on the town council, I think we'd be interested in buying the building. So they know that, but it's sort of a moot point, and so it could be just unnecessary to have it in there, but I don't know.
I think anybody reading this would want, would ask that, I wonder if they're interested in it personally.
Yeah, it sort of seems to me it, it, it just displays our sense of commitment to wanting good, we'll buy the building from you, you know? And if you don't want to sell it, how about renting it? So I, I kind of think it's.
And the only comment I could, is I would just take out the five hundred dollars, because the very, the sentence of course, you had a nominal amount, let them come back to us and say, you know, we want this or something, but I wouldn't give them the number right now, maybe they can get it for a hundred dollars.
Although we're now a public meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, problems left.
But I, I would just take that out and let, let it sort of ride, but I think the point is made.
Well, that's why I'm, you know.
That is great.
I think it's great, but, and I, I think it'd be wonderful to be able to get where Laura had at as soon as possible.
Or, yeah, and not, it's just not about that, it's about access to the public, the citizens being able, getting into office and being able to talk to town.
This is true, yes.
And those who live in town are elderly, and it's very, it's hard enough to get up into this room. And yes, I'd come down if I know, but a lot of times, they just kind of sneak up the stairs very slowly. And I think some people don't come in and talk about something because it's a, it's a task, but if they could just kind of sit their head in, what's happening? I think that might be helpful as far as just having more input.
Dude, one thing I didn't mention, as some of you know, the county has done homework as to what, what it would take to fix that building up to real standard, I'm supposed to just fix them up or whatever. And as I understand it, that number is something like sixty thousand dollars. It is a number that, I think there are different views as to how, you know, the county is facing, if they keep it, a rather significant amount of money in order to fix it up to the standard that they've been talking about. Anyway, the, the five hundred, keep it in or out, I don't feel strong.
I took you.
I think, I think to move it forward if it's.
And you just skip that seven, what would you pay it to?
Yeah, you have to go back and ask them.
Exactly.
Just put it in.
And then, then it would become a big argument, what's inappropriate enough. Okay, well, then we'll do that, send it tomorrow. Do we need a vote? I don't think we need to.
I just.
I mean, we've always agreed.
I, I don't know. I guess, actually, but, yeah. Comes to spending the money, you know, voice money, that's six thousand dollars a unit right there, plus you often fix the building up, you said sixty thousand. You tell me where you're going to get the money, I'd like to see.
Okay. So, so, token, how many numbers do you have?
If the time comes.
Yeah, don't worry about the numbers, Dan, it's not, it's not coming out of our pocket, it's the person, it's coming out of the.
I'll say, my consensus, but Jerry would check or oppose.
I mean, just the first, you've seen this, I mean, John, like you say, speaking, not on the council, but more sort of senate as a council, I just.
We know John's not even a mayor, so.
I know.
My friend, why are you doing that?
We have these two taxes, personal private taxes, they.
Well, let's see if there's interest, I think there are ways to deal with.
Like, we don't have to do it.
Yeah. Just saying we're interested.
But I think we should look at other options, too.
I'm all for that, and we haven't looked and talked about it enough, and we're open, everybody's open to the suggestions of what else we might do. All right, the next and last public forum. I know open the subject, public discussion, any subject anyone might want. I close the public forum.
And we'll hand out badges at the door for those of you who endured this meeting all the way to the end.
But those of you, but let me just, you didn't come back, but let me say something more, let me say something before you leave, actually. There's a quick line we have in the closed session. We have received a offer for the property on Lake Atlanta, which houses, if you will, the old brown building. It is the intended use of that property, the intention of the potential purchaser, is that perhaps that could be a location for a post office?
Yes.
Post office has expressed a willingness to lease a new building, which is not what they said on January eighth, or whatever buzz when the, the handcuffs showed up. So there's an offer that Mayor considers consideration. We're going to go into closed session.
Did you read that motion?
And I want to give you the appropriate verbiage because we surely don't want to do anything that is true. And I believe I've read it already. And I do have to say, oh, it's John's, what he said, it's what I said, I'm just saying again. Councils enter into closed session in accordance with the provisions of section two point two dash three seven one one point three to discuss the disposition of publicly held real property, namely. namely parcel three at the intersection of Old Route 211, 522 and Lake Lane, containing .5853 acres, where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of town council. Which is the. So the motion from the second of the call, say it. Aye.
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 Aye. President, the motion.
President, second.
I take that, I'm down in the motion.